Do we know what happened in jail? Oops. Our meeting is now called to order. I would like to welcome everyone to the October 12 regular board meeting. Welcome to our student representative, Casey Kono. Ms. Kono will have an opportunity to provide comments regarding her school later in the meeting. Ms. Ritchie, actually, I would like to introduce our board directors who are present. I would like to introduce Director Leslie Harris, Director Sue Peters, Director Scott Pingham. Director Gary is not here tonight. We haven't heard from her yet, but hopefully she'll be here soon. Director Stephon Plantford actually had to leave for emergency and he'll be back later. So now, Ms. Ritchie.
Director Burke.
Oh, and Director Burke is out of town. Ms. Ritchie, the roll call, please.
Director Harris.
Here.
Director Peters.
Here.
Director Pingham.
Here.
Director Petu.
Here. Can we now stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to recognize an important community partner, and I will turn to Dr. Nolan for his remarks.
Welcome all. Thanks for being here tonight. We'll start with recognition for one of our premier partners. The Nessholm Family Foundation has been one of our great supporters and partners over many, many, many years, 15, I think. And as I have shared before, I had the opportunity to work in our middle schools in Seattle 20 years ago, and when I came back, I didn't know it for a while, but I certainly saw tremendous gains and improvements across the district. And the three schools that Nessholm Family Foundation has been working in over that time period has made a huge difference. Those three middle schools are among the schools in the state that have the largest African-American population and the best achievement for our African-American students. So they're positive outliers and leading the way for us in Seattle and the rest of the state in terms of what works for closing opportunity gaps. So I'd like to introduce Kelly Arumaki, Regional Executive Director for Schools, to tell us a little bit more about the Nessholm family and what they have, a small representation of what they have done for us over many, many years.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for having me. Over the past 15 years, the Nessholm Family Foundation has invested over $6 million at Aki Karose, Denny, and Mercer Middle Schools. Their investment has provided professional development for teachers and school leaders, a full-time assistant principal at each school focused on literacy coaching for teachers, a literacy coach who coordinates curriculum and assessment across the three schools. They provide funds for books for classrooms and a mental health professional in each school to address the socio-emotional challenges that students have. The results have been nothing short of stunning. Mercer, Denny, and Aki have consistently been identified as three of our district's top gap-closing middle schools. When compared with schools across the state with high numbers of Black students, Mercer, Denny, and Aki are the top three schools for Black student achievement in mathematics, and they're, all three of them are in the top 15 for Black student achievement in literacy. This past year, the Nessholmes have been actively promoting the Seattle Public Schools and have been sharing the positive partnership that they have with the school district. As a result of their outreach, you will be voting tonight to approve a $300,000 grant from the Satterburg Foundation to extend this work to the highest needs elementary schools that feed into the three middle schools. The goal of the Satterburg Foundation is to parallel the long-term investment of the Nessholm Foundation. The Nessholm Foundation, Family Foundation partnership is a model of collaboration between school district and community-based organizations. It's a partnership that is founded on mutual respect of ideas, expertise, and contributions of the school's educators as well as those of the community. It's a partnership grounded in current research in teaching and learning as well as trauma-informed practices. And most importantly, it's a partnership that is laser-focused on equity and eliminating the opportunity gap. I'd like to introduce, we have our Nessholm principals here, so Jeff Clark from Denny, Mia Williams from Aki Karose, and I don't think, oh, and there's Chris Carter. So maybe the three of them could come up, and then Mia is going to speak on behalf of the three principals, and then we'll have, introduce the family.
Good evening. I just wanted to just turn and just say thank you on behalf of us as leaders, but also the generations of students that you have had a tremendous impact on their lives and their educational experience. I just wanted to just share with you that the Nessholmes have been like the true picture of what equity looks like in making sure that every student gets what they need to be successful. They have helped me grow as a leader. They allowed me to partner with these wonderful gentlemen behind me. They helped make me get smarter and better for kids as well as the teaching staff in our building where we get professional development. We've gotten opportunities to travel, see what best practice looks like for students. And the other thing is, is that whenever we talk about a need and they're looking at the whole child, they've been able to step up every time we've said that it's not only the content of literacy. We have to wrap our arms around students. And so we were allowed to have care coordinators in our buildings that were able to help support students and eliminate any barriers that they may have to being successful in the classrooms. So they stepped up, and we all are fortunate to have that opportunity, which we wish that all schools were able to have that for kids. So again, I just want to say thank you, and I'm going to pass it over to Jeff Clark to say a couple words.
Good evening, School Board Directors. I too just want to thank the Nessholmes very publicly and let you know that their contribution has not just led to significant reform and achievement in our three schools, but it's through this innovation and that collaboration that many things have come to all Seattle Public Schools, whether that be a different pedagogy in literacy, for example, that we started a decade ago that quickly spread throughout all middle schools. So their contribution is far beyond just the hundreds and hundreds of kids who have come through our schools, but all of Seattle Public Schools. So thank you so much. Mr. Carter.
I'd like to also express my gratitude to the Nessholm Foundation, of course, our partnership with the city of Lovey that has also helped to facilitate this. The one point I'd like to really emphasize here, as well as that Jeff talked about this and Mia talked about this, but within this innovation and growth comes teacher leadership, and teacher leadership that is not just able to be replicated and scaled, but endure over time. So that investment around students, investment around literacy, and the development of teacher leadership is profound.
All right. So now I'd like to invite up the Nessholm family. So John Laurel and Erica Nessholm, if you could come up, and then John is going to go ahead and give a couple of words for you.
Well, thank you, Kelly. We firmly believe that education is the central challenge of our time. We're very proud of what has been accomplished, but we are fully cognizant that there's a very, very long way to go. But I really want to pay tribute to our team members who really do the work. First of all, our principals, Jeff and Chris and Mia, and our assistant principals, Dan Reeve. Dan is here today. Would you stand up, Dan? Adrian Nester and Kristi Bowman-White, and our AP Coordinator, the force of nature, Susanna Cap, and our consultant, Kristi Scandrup. Kristi, please stand up. Along with the district representatives at our monthly meetings, we have a real team culture, one that is totally focused on student learning and student achievement, and one that constantly seeks ways to become more innovative and more effective. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the important contribution, or I'm sorry, coordination between our work and the City of Seattle levy. The crucial levy dollars complement ours. We are just simply ecstatic that the Satterburg Foundation is joining us in this work. Obviously, the next steps is to move our feeder schools forward so that our incoming sixth graders are fully equipped to take on our middle school work. We are optimistic about the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd invite the board to come down and greet the Nessholmes, and thank you again for awesome work.
Kristi.
Come on.
Monday was Indigenous Peoples' Day. Two years ago, the school board passed a resolution commemorating that and setting aside that day for our work district-wide, and... Hold that thought.
Okay, tonight, we will have the Haida Heritage Group from South Shore K-8 perform for us. At this time, I would like to invite my colleagues to take a seat in the audience for the performance.
I'm a 19, I hate to admit, 68 graduate of Ingram High School, and now I'm the announcer for our Haida Heritage Dance Group. I was just telling my sister, I moved here in the first grade from our village of Alaska in Heideberg in southeastern on Prince of Wales Island. And my mother never in her wildest dreams would have come into my classroom and shared her culture because back then it wasn't really validated, it wasn't valued, and it wasn't asked for. But now we're invited to a school board meeting, so this is wonderful. Our dance group is called Haida Heritage, and in my native tongue, I say Haida Heritage. Hinu itzkiang. We are Haida Heritage. Di gudanai hien aoyagen. We're happy to be here. Glanwadluwan ankil lagan. All of you are welcome to share our culture with us on Indigenous Week, which is a long time coming also. Our dance group, we have children in our group from South Shore, my three grandchildren. A niece goes to Cleveland, and we also have a principal from Graham Hill, a retired teacher. I'm a retired para ed. I worked in the Seattle School District for 35 years, and also a para ed from South Shore, and also the native ed coordinator from the Renton School District. Hope I didn't forget any of them. So, but mostly, we're focusing on our children, and they're so proud of their culture, and they've been doing this for quite a few years now. And I just want to say that I started in the district in 1970. It was the first Indian education program. It was implemented in 1970 in the Georgetown Elementary, which is now demolished. And I just remember I had to wear a dress to work every day. I had a manual typewriter, and I had a mimeograph machine, and that's about it. That's all we had back then. But I'm just thankful that we don't have to wear dresses every day. So here we are, Haida Heritage. Raise your hand if you're from South Shore. Cleveland. Renton High School, coordinator. And my niece over here is a principal at Graham Hill. We're so proud of her accomplishments. And we also have my sister, who's a retired teacher, Sandra, who works at South Shore. Am I forgetting anybody else? And then, of course, our little ones, who haven't really started their formal education yet. Our first song is, we only have a few minutes, so we're going to do a welcome song, so we want you to put two hands up. This is a gesture of welcome, thankfulness, praise, and friendship. And we'll make our hands go back and forth from left to right as we sing the friendship song. Haka! Aha! Heyu, heyu. Uhu, uhu. Heyu, heyu. Ka yuwi, ka yuwi. Ka yuwi, ka yuwi. Aha! Aha! Heyu, heyu. Uhu, uhu. Heyu, heyu. Ka yuwi, ka yuwi. Ka yuwi, ka yuwi. Aha! Aha! Care to move this because I might knock the whole thing over, but, oh, there. Many years ago, the Haida people of the Queen Charlotte Islands, which is now called Haida Gwaii, we're Haida, Kiagani Haida, we're Alaskan Haidas, but the Haida Gwaii people of British Columbia sent us this flag, which is the Haida National Flag. And they were trying to stop the forests on their land from being clear-cut, but the government wouldn't listen to them, and the logging companies wouldn't listen to their concerns. So the grandmothers of the village, the Nonis, the precious Nonis locked arms across the logging roads, and finally, their concerns were listened to. And some of these things are happening, as we know, today around Native lands. So we're going to sing the Lisle Island Song. Haka! Aha! Uhu, uhu. Hey, hi-yo, ha-wi, ha-wi. Hey, hi-yo, ha-wi, ha-wi. Uhu, uhu. 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 Hey, hi-yo, ha-wi, ha-wi. And before we do our exit, I think Gail wanted to say a few words.
I just want to recognize, I mean, I feel so proud to see them perform. Very modest, amazing singers, love them all. We also have Chrissy Harris here, who's from United Indian of All Tribes Foundation, known as Daybreak Star. So, you know, I want to just plug this. Sandra Segundo is also an author, and we have a book for each of the Board Directors, and she wrote this book, and we give this out for professional development for Since Time Immemorial. And on the, in the back of it is also, or in the front is a CD of them singing. And she wrote the book, and she also did the illustrations as well, so.
Thank you so much for that amazing performance. But before you leave, we actually would like you to say your first name, and you don't have to say your grade, not the kids. Just pass. Say your first name.
Emmanuel. I'm in, I go to Cascade. I'm in third grade.
I'm Solomon. I go to South Shore, and I'm in fourth grade.
Kaylee, do you want to say something?
Kaylee is in preschool, and Russell is not in school yet.
But he's ready.
I'm Sophia, and I'm in first grade, and I go to South Shore.
I'm Malia, and I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Nelson Middle School.
I'm Gemma, and I'm in seventh grade, and I go to South Shore.
My name is Andrew. I go to South Shore, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Gabby. I go to Cleveland, and I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Tommy Segundo, and I am not in school, but I run the Title VI Program for the Renton School District, and I worked for Hachusah about 10 years ago, and that was kind of my start to my professional career, so it's always good to come back. I think he didn't want to say his name, so he ran away.
I am Sorrell. I graduated from Cleveland in 2013, and I'm currently attending Northwest Indian College in Bellingham.
Hi, my name is Matthew Williams, and I graduated from Renton High.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Harris, and I'm the interim admin director for United Indians of All Tribes at Daybreak Star.
Hi, I'm Sandra Segundo. I'm currently at South Shore, pre-K through eight. I work with the EBD program in the middle school, and I've also worked for the Hachusah program, and I think I've worked at pretty much every school in my 20 years at the district.
I'm Dina Russo. I'm the principal at Graham Hill Elementary School. I worked for 17 years in Seattle Public Schools. I started as an hourly employee in the southeast, and I've done most of my work in the southeast. So as you can hear, a lot of us are from the southeast region. Some are going to school in Renton, but all of us have really important jobs in public education and Indigenous tribes, so.
I'm Vicky Segundo. I started working for Seattle Public Schools in 1970, and I have been retired for almost one year, so it's just been, it's a new experience for me. I've taught special ed, ELL. I worked at Van Essel for a while, and then for the past 10 years, I've been with the Hachusah Native Education Program. But I did want to mention that I, we do have two other members, my two grandkids that graduated from, well, one from Cleveland, and then one is currently at Franklin High School in 10th grade. Shay. And so we're, I'm a product of Seattle Public Schools. I was brought up in Ballard. I went to Crown Hill, Whitman, and graduated from Ingram before I started working as a teacher. So I'm thankful to be here, and there was somebody else, oh, there was three students that couldn't make it. They go to Whitman and Gatewood. They're from North Seattle, but because of the traffic, they just couldn't get here today.
Can I say something else? I'm, I'm not sure if Jeannie already said this, my aunt, but we are all one big family. These are my siblings. This is my mom and my aunt, so, and we're all from the town of Heideberg, Alaska, even though a lot of us have, we're born and raised in Seattle, so.
One more thing to say.
My youngest daughter is a counselor at Bellevue High School, and she's talking about coming back to the hood.
Can we give them one more applause? They did a wonderful job. Thank you so much. It was an amazing performance. Okay, go ahead.